She's about to get graduated.
All right. We've got the now world famous Sheriff Hinkley on tonight.
Hi, everybody. How are we? Hey, Kathy.
Howdy.
How are you?
It's good, good. Well, it's 7:00 PM. Shall we get started?
Show off.
I'll order the May 6, 2021 Board of Commissioners' regular session in accordance with Section 3 of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Clerk will note for the record, this meeting is being conducted remotely via Zoom pursuant to a local declaration of emergency adopted by the Board of Commissioners on March 18, 2020 and extended on October 15, 2020. All members are attending remotely and with video activated during the roll call, each member will indicate if they are currently located in Calhoun County or if not this county, city, or village or township and state from which they're attending their remote meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
Commissioner Jake Smith.
Present, Battle Creek, Michigan.
Commissioner Steve Frisby.
Present in Battle Creek.
Commissioner Derek King.
Present, Suresco.
Commissioner Tommy Miller.
Present, Meringo Township.
Commissioner Gary Tompkins.
Present, Homer Township.
Commissioner Kathy Sue Betty.
Here. Lakeview, Battle Creek, Calhoun County.
Commissioner Rochelle Hatcher.
Present from the beautiful District 2 here in Battle Creek, Calhoun County.
We have four of them.
Thank you. After a moment of silence, Commissioner King will lead us into pledge. They ask tonight that you keep Commissioner Miller and his children in your thoughts as they had a very difficult few days ahead. Thank you.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the May 6, 2021 Board of Commissioners' regular session agenda as presented?
I'll move, Miller.
Support Hatcher.
Miller and Hatcher, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisby.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Betty.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, please.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' April 13, 2021 Equalization Session according to MCL 209.5 as presented?
So move Tompkins.
Support Betty.
Tompkins and Betty, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Frisby.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Your Betty.
Yes. Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is citizens' time. During citizens' time, the board chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the board. A person recognized by the chair shall call in and state his or her name and community of residence. A person may address the board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for citizens' time and on the agenda and only on matters that are relevant to county government. The chair shall control the length of each person, shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes, and shall not allow negative personal comments. Please mute your TV or computer when calling in. There's a background sound will generate feedback. And there's approximately a 30-second delay between the live meeting feed and the YouTube feed. Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners? I see a hand up. Mac McCullough.
Thank you, Chairman Frisby. I am just coming on to speak in reference to the resolution that's on your agenda tonight. My name is Michael McCullough. I live in Battle Creek and I'm an employee here at Willard Library where I am actually working this evening. But I wanted to acknowledge the efforts that have gone into putting the resolution on the agenda tonight and express my gratitude for that. And simply to say how excited I am to have the support of the county as we continue this work to extend broadband access to the people of Calhoun County. And I just wanted to express my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac. Is there anybody else? Who do we have running the show tonight?
It's Patrick.
Hi, Patrick.
Hey, there.
Anybody in the queue?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll wait just a few minutes. Or a minute. Before we move ahead. Still nobody, Patrick?
Yeah, no one's in the queue.
Okay, we'll move along. Elected appointed county officials comments. Does anybody would like to make any comments tonight? Sheriff Hinkley.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to give everyone some background. I had an opportunity to attend a sheriff's leadership training for new sheriffs and I had the opportunity to attend with 27 other sheriffs. And it was just a great, great program, great training, great education. But most importantly, I'd like to announce and remind everyone, this is Corrections Officers Week and I'm going to steal a, I'm going to steal a phrase from Ronald Reagan and it's so true. No group of Americans has a more difficult or less publicly visible job than the brave men and women who work in our corrections facilities. And I just, my hat's off to each and every one of them, the hard work that they do every single day. And I just want to take this opportunity publicly to thank them and we just appreciate everything they do. Thank you all.
Thank you. Clerk Hinkley.
Good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to extend another thank you to the Board of Commissioners for approving our new contract with our current vendor CoFile last month for our marriage license online application and process, and that is going really well. We've been in communication pretty much daily working out the process and building that kind of from the ground up. A huge thank you to our IT department. They are working with me side by side along with CoFile to get our IT needs taken care of on this end. It's very exciting. It's not only going to be very time-saving for our office, but a great convenience to our citizens of Calhoun County. So we're very excited. This will also be, will be the pilot county for those who use CoFile in the 83 counties. We will be the pilot. So we're very excited about that. As well as many of you know that we did have an election on Tuesday, although it was a small election. It was an important election for those who were conducting it. So our canvassers started today and they should wrap things up tomorrow. And we just appreciate their time and talents of coming in every time we have an election. And I think our elections director Terry Lowe for the wonderful job that she does as well. So I think you all have a great evening and a wonderful Mother's Day.
Thank you. You too. Anybody else? Tonight? All right, we have no special order of business. We do have six items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, may I? Helen Guzzo actually had her hand raised for.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you for your advocacy. I appreciate that, Commissioner Tompkins. I want to thank Commissioner Tompkins and Commissioner Smith for being on the Senior Milage Allocation Committee. I'm Helen Guzzo from the, from Calhoun County Senior Services. I just wanted to say Dominic O. was going to attend, but he said he's feeling bad from his second dose of vaccine, but Dominic O. is on the agenda to be approved for the 13th member of the Senior Milage Allocation Committee. He is a Brumies individual. He's an engineer in the Fort Custer Industrial Park, very active in his church. And he was one of three applicants to the Senior Milage Allocation Committee and he, he was recommended by the members of the Senior Milage Allocation Committee to take Teresa Shell's position. Teresa Shell, after maybe 10 or 12 years, is moving to Ann Arbor and served honorably and we want to thank you or her for her service. So I think Dominic is on. He might have missed the public comment time on the call here.
Okay.
For his willingness. And then in a regular year, we would have had a resolution recognizing the older Michiganyans Month and Centenarian Luncheon that we would be having next week. And since we can't have those public events, I just wanted you all to know that we've identified 38 centenarians. People are 99 years old, turn 100 this year. And we've interviewed 26 of them and we're going to do a centenarian of Calhoun County project where we have the photograph taken and a summary of their life and going to be taking that around to public and events in the summer and the fall. So.
Awesome. Helen, could you do me a favor? Take about 30 seconds and explain the process that was used to select Dominic?
The way we've done it is when we have a open seat, I advertise in. So in this case, we, Teresa Shell represented the Battle Creek area and we don't, our lowest representation on SMAC is from Battle Creek. So I only advertised in the shopper news, but we advertised for the position in the shopper news and people submit an application, the same application that's on the county website. And they ask them for a copy of their resume and we share it with the Senior Milage Allocation Committee members. And then we invite them to a meeting. They have four or five minutes to talk about their qualifications and why they want to serve. And then Senior Milage Allocation Committee members get to ask questions and then we do a vote. And then that's who the Senior Milage Allocation Committee recommends to the Board of Commission for our membership.
Awesome. I appreciate you explaining that. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the, unless anybody else has their hand up. Let me double check. Don't see any. We'll move on to the consent agenda with six items for approval. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move Tompkins.
Support Smith.
Tompkins and Smith, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Betty.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisby.
Yes.
Yes, seven yes.
Motion carries. Special committee workshop or board reports?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, please go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to just mention and report that last week was the MAC conferences, which I was able to attend and as usual, every year it is outstanding and the information that I received is great. I was able to do a couple of, several of the, because it's all online, several of the sessions. A lot of them were legislative, 101 training and also had a very interesting session as far as juveniles and juvenile laws in the state of Michigan and in the county. So it was very interesting and I just wanted to just say that I appreciate that opportunity to be there and representing Calhoun County because it was, even though we were online, it was, you did meet and network with other county officials. We also just briefly, right quick, wanted to say there was a planning, I did have a planning meeting and we did elect new officers. I, and I believe, I'm pretty sure that there are names that most people know and I did leave my notes, but we did do the elections of officers and then also to, we did look at some zoning issues for Emmett and for Covas Township. So. Yeah, and everyone's waiting to get back together again.
Awesome. Thanks for attending that. Appreciate you. And if there's information you can share with everyone, let us know.
I certainly will. Yes.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, if I may please.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. And certainly I joined Commissioner Hatcher on the virtual aspect of it as well as I attended the MAC conference as well. It, you know, virtual never takes the place of actually being able to be there in person, but yeah, it was still a very good conference and had some very interesting topics that they covered through that conference. So again, it was well worth the time to spend doing that. So. I just have one committee report on the docket this evening. Calhoun County Solid Waste Committee Advisory Committee met on April 21. We approved a mini grant, an amount of $500 for purchase trail cameras, which is part of a plan to reduce the illegal dumping that's being, that is currently taking place. Certainly, most of us see it through certainly Calhoun County, but it's been in some specific areas. This pilot plan will be utilized and hopefully going forward, we're actually going to be able to have some prosecution on some of these individuals that seem to be emboldened by continuing to dump illegally. So hopefully I'll stay tuned to that. I'll update you as I get more information. We also heard a report from Sarah Kelly of Solid Waste, which included an update on the success of the electronics appliances recycling event that took place on April 10. Sarah reported that over 12,660 pounds of appliances and close to 50,000 pounds of electronics were collected. So certainly a very good event. People were lined up from 8 o'clock in the morning right up till noon. So again, a great event for electronics and appliance recycling. So that is my report this evening. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else?
Chair Frisby.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Summit Point met for their annual meeting on Tuesday and that includes the election of officers. So I would just like to thank very much all of them, including our very own Kelly Scott, who is still stuck serving as treasurer. She does an amazing job in that position. Dr. Terrence Lunger is serving as a secretary. And Richard Lindsay, our very own Richard Lindsay is vice chair. And then myself is chair because nobody else wants it. But I, I do appreciate still everyone else serving and, and Jeannie Goodrich has just done an amazing job with Summit Point and our community mental health. So it's, it's going good. And I know Kelly has some things that she'll include in her report. So thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have a couple. Today we received notice formally that the 911 Director, Rich Field, has announced that he is retiring and he plans to be gone in August. So we'll begin a replacement process for him right away. I'm sure that'll, that'll be posted throughout the state looking for well-qualified candidates and he's done a great job. He's been a very stabilizing force, calm influence and we'll miss him. But he decided that retirement was for him. So good for him. Also, it was last week or two weeks ago now. Congressman Peter Meyer was in town and Kathy Sue Betty helped arrange some of this. One of the meetings we had was at Summit Point at the First Step facility, the new walk-in clinic or walk-in assistance place on college that does great work and we learned.
The new psychiatric care facility.
That's it. We learned that in the first 30 days that 300 patients had gone into that facility seeking help, which is a little bit, takes you back a little bit in the staggering numbers in a, you know, one month period. But if you've worked in healthcare or mental healthcare, you understand that's probably very reflective of what's going on. So we're really happy to show that off in the community and talk about future needs in mental health care with the congressman. And thank you Kathy Sue Betty for helping arrange that, that opportunity. And Jeannie and her staff did a great job presenting the Summit Point position that day. So.
Can I, can I add one thing to that, Chair, for the, um, so it was interesting because Dr. Sean Fields, who is in charge of that specific piece of the urgent care psychiatric facility and Vice Chair Tompkins was also joined us. He had a grid on, as Steve said, how many people had been there. What else I found very interesting was they were the busiest, which is very surprising to me, on late afternoons, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And not so much on a, on Friday night or Saturday night or the weekends. And one of the reasons I, reasons that I wanted to highlight that was it is a 24-hour urgent care psychiatric facility. So what they're thinking is that most people are making some assumptions that, oh, it's probably just, you know, we need to do it during the day. And so anyways, so we are set and ready to go 24/7. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yep, and kudos to all the, all the board members who helped support that. And I know it wasn't a, it was a little bit of a leap of faith to put it in, but I think that the numbers supported it and I think we're going to reap benefits from that as a community. So.
Yeah, I would, I would absolutely agree. Chief Blocker was very instrumental. Sheriff Hinkley has been a huge help. Brenda Hunt also makes a lot of things happen that you don't think can happen. So, so anyways, just very, very, very thankful for all of that.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? Move on. We have no unfinished business, so I'll turn it over for new business and the county administrators' report to Kelly Scott.
Chair, first I'll just mention that from a COVID response and a county reopening plan standpoint, we're really continuing with plans that I reported back in April, even though the state has come out with some new guidance for return to office operations and then MDHHS has amended their masks and gathering order a couple of times since we last met. Good news is, you know, I think partly because of all the webinars and just, you know, keeping up with information from MAC and other associations, we kind of had, had a heads up of, you know, the plans over the summer. So we are planning to still have the county board meet virtually, at least through June. And most of our other boards and committees are following suit with continuing virtual meetings. We are working with our elected officials and departments to create more of a transition hybrid remote work plan over the summer, bringing more and more employees to report in person so that we're hopeful that maybe after Labor Day, we're back to more of a full in-person workforce. But again, we've been in that, what we've been calling Phase 4 reopening since last July and have been providing services to the public with all of the buildings open except for the Justice Center, based on the court's separate guidance from the State Court Administrative Office. So don't expect much change to, to the public over the summer, but we will be trying to re-acclimate our employees to more in-office work. So that's happening. Happy to report that in conjunction with the final steps to issue pension bonds, Standard and Poor's did assign or reaffirm our AA long-term credit rating and they reinstated our stable outlook. So that's very good. AA rating is second only to the top rating, which is a AAA. Last I knew, there were just a couple of counties, including Oakland County, only the very, very large with much larger fund balances than Calhoun have the AAA. Most municipalities similar to our size, including the city of Battle Creek, have a double A minus. And I was never satisfied with A minus in high school or college. So I'm happy that we've got a solid AA, which really is supposed to reassure our investors that the county has, we're positioned very well to take care of our bond obligations. And once again, Standard and Poor's highlights as reason for that strong rating. They really seem to appreciate our strong financial management policies and practices, our conservative budgeting, and that we're able to offset the risks. They continue to talk about Calhoun County as being a weak economy. And that really has to do a lot with factors like our per capita income is lower than the national average. And then they also continue to mention that although we've taken some steps to address unfunded liabilities related to retiree health insurance, more needs to be done in that area. So nothing really surprising, just pleasantly surprised that they reinstated our stable outlook based on the unemployment rate rebounding from last year when we got our last credit rating. I want to echo Sheriff Hinkley's appreciation for our corrections officers. I also appreciate their, their dedication to the county and the changing landscape that is facing the sheriff within our jail. Also, from a broader perspective, there is a national effort to name this week Public Service Recognition Week, always the first week of May. And so that includes recognizing all of the public servants who work in federal, state, local, tribal government. And so we sent out a thank you earlier to all of the county employees. I just want to reiterate, we appreciate everyone who serves, serves the public and especially this week. Also, today is National Nurse Appreciation Week. So finally, I appreciate all of our nurses who continue work a lot of hours and are, you know, really struggling not to be burnt out with, with the continued vaccine efforts and, you know, trying to manage their other jobs in their home lives. So I want to use that. I think some of the commissioners covered most of the boards and committees. Our Veterans Affairs Committee met April 14, kind of a normal agenda where they continue to approve emergency relief for veterans. They approved some of those and another two in a special meeting. The, I also was very appreciative to attend the Michigan Association of Counties Legislative Conference. And the good news that I will add for that is that MAC is saying that they're planning to do an in-person conference for their regular annual. So in, this, this one was the Legislative Conference. MAC's regular annual conference is in September at Mackinac Island and they are planning to do an in-person conference for that. Lots of webinars and discussions with other county administrators and with our state and national associations regarding the American Rescue Plan Act. So we are expecting to get the, the much-needed guidance about spending rules from the U.S. Treasury within the next day or two. And our first 50% payment of the 26 million estimated for Calhoun County is supposed to arrive on Monday. So I am, you know, putting together those strategies and priorities in anticipation of our board workshop at the end of May. I've got a meeting with Rebecca Flurry, City Manager for Battle Creek, next week to talk about a few items that we want to collaborate on with their use of funds as well as ours. And then I've been seeking input from community partners and I've been getting input and also from our, internally from our department heads and elected officials. So we're in good shape and I look forward to getting that guidance and putting those plans together. Also, just want to report this week, we got our annual report from Blue Cross Blue Shield on employee health insurance experience from last year, from 2020. Of course, our claims were down a little bit last year because of COVID, but all in all, what's, what I'm really happy about is that Blue Cross compares our per employee, per month claims and also the behavior of our employees when it comes to taking care of their preventative needs and their health screenings. They compare that to their other clients. So across the state, employers that are similar in size. And we had a new representative this year who didn't really, you know, wasn't really familiar with some of the strategies that we put in place. And what he said was, I can just. wasn't really familiar with some of the strategies that we put in place. And what he said was, I can just tell from the data that you're doing something. This doesn't just happen. Um, you know, there, there's definitely some efforts in place. And I would remind you that some of those efforts that you've supported are the, the partnership, public-private partnership to have our Care Here Employee Health and Wellness Clinic. Um, that has definitely driven costs down. And then our, our wellness, um, committee and our wellness efforts where we reward employees and, and require them to get their health. So just really happy that our overall costs are lower than the benchmark. And, you know, ultimately that results in healthier employees. So I want to thank our HR Director, Kim Arshambo, and all of those who are involved with our benefits and wellness committees, because that's a, a really big, we pay, spend about $5 million a year on employee health benefits. We have solid benefits, but we're also doing it in a way that saves taxpayer dollars. Um, let's see what else. Yeah, I think Commissioner Vetti covered the Summit Point meeting fairly well. Um, good news is that Summit Point has been receiving sufficient federal dollars, Medicaid dollars to serve a much higher need for mental health services. We have more people eligible this year than before. So our finances are in good shape and really looking forward to the impact of the community impact of the First Step Urgent Care Center. So that concludes my report. Unless there are questions, I'll move on to new business. Okay. So the first item tonight is 12B1. We have four items under new business tonight. 12B1 is a request from the road department to approve a grant application under a grants policy. This is a new state grant program that is, um, aimed at reducing the old variety of diesel vehicles to get them off the road and replace them with new vehicles that are more emissions friendly, more environmental friendly, have cleaner emissions based on the new standard. Um, so we, we have our representative from the road department here tonight is our Operations Director, Corey Albrecht. Um, I'll just summarize that this is a statewide program of $30 million. And, um, again, really appreciate our road department being proactive and seeking out grants, because as you probably remember, Brad Wilcox has been really instrumental in creating a fleet replacement plan. We were in rough shape with the road department, um, about 10 years ago, and we're in much better shape. However, on an annual basis, we're still having to, you know, finance and, um, we still have some trucks that need to be replaced. So the road department went through and identified four trucks that were on the list to be replaced next year, submitted those to get replaced with the newer vehicles. And the grant would provide 263,000 costs that we would otherwise just have to take out of the, um, budget of the road department. So this will allow us to get about a million dollars worth of, of vehicles replaced um, at about a 30% discount with, with this grant. Otherwise, we're going to replace them anyway. We may have had to spread it out a little bit. So I definitely su- support your approval of this grant application and we hope it's successful.
Hey, can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County Road Department grant application to Eagle for local freight vehicles, port drage vehicles, transit and shuttle bus replacements as presented?
So moved Vetti?
Support Hatcher, excuse me.
Betty and Hatcher, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
It's seven yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12B2 are the monthly financial statements prepared by finance. Um, these are statements that are year-to-date through March 2021. So only three, three months or one quarter through our fiscal year. So it's relatively early. And in fact, um, this is usually the first iteration of financial statements that we do each year. Right in the middle of closing out last fiscal year, our finance staff are working on the audit that is due in June. So right now, um, what we can point out that, that is included in the memo is that we are continuing to see revenues lag behind previous years. Um, there's a property tax variance, revenue variance that really just relates to timing of some year-end reversals. But our charges for services area um, that includes our revenue in the jail and some other items in the sheriff's office continue to be, be reduced. And then we are also, on the expense side, we're also seeing some lower, lower than budgeted expenditures, mainly due to we've got so many vacancies right now that we're trying to remain, we're trying to hold vacant to help out the budget. And then we have the work share program in place still for non-union employees individual furloughs. So really not a lot to report on the county side. The road department, probably the one takeaway I would note is that um, hopefully winter maintenance is over for the first segment of the winter. Um, and, and the road department did see about a hundred thousand dollars more in winter maintenance expense than last year at this time. So, um, the rest of the winter maintenance budget, of course, comes in, hopefully, in December. Other than that, things are, things are on track, but it's really just early for the financial statements.
We have a motion to approve the Calhoun County March 2021 financials as presented.
So moved Tompkins.
Support Betty?
Tompkins and Betty, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
It's seven yes.
Motion carries.
All right. The last two items, 12B3 and 4 are really the final steps in some development projects that we have been working on and, and that the board has approved initial steps for, actually for a couple of years. 12B3 is a request that you approve contracts for site readiness planning. And the contractor selected was Burns and McDonald. The, um, this project started back in 2019 in November when we held and the board approved the grant application to M E D C to help with, um, two sites. One of them is in Marshall Township. It's really close to the city, but we call that a mega site. It's one of the largest sites that, um, M E D C is promoting for commercial industrial development. The second one is, uh, Sacreiter, uh, John Sacreiter, who's the Chair of our Planning Commission, um, their, their property in Emmett Township, which is basically south of Michigan Avenue across from the casino. It's about 1,500. So these two sites, um, in order to better be able to market them, they really need to have this, this site readiness, uh, planning work done, which identifies exactly what infrastructure and other things need to happen to make them shovel-ready. And actually, we're trying to respond right now to a couple of developer requests. And it makes it difficult without this, um, surveying work and, um, better, better pictures, better maps, and just better understanding of the costs that would require, would be required if someone wants to put a new, put a new commercial development or industrial development on that property. So this is, uh, grant-funded. We did receive the grants. It's 277,000 for the Marshall site, 160,000 for the Sacreiter site. And so those grant applications, I think, were revised and approved back in December. So this is the final step is just to, actually approve the contracts with, with the architectural firm, engineering firm to make all that work happen, hopefully as soon as possible.
Can I have a motion to approve the site readiness planning contracts with Burns and McDonald as presented?
So moved Smith.
Support Betty?
Smith and Betty, any discussion?
Yeah, something. Sure. So Mr. Sacreiter sits on this board thing, or board, right? Is it normal for us to, I mean, get a grant to benefit possibly his property? Or would that be something that is normal?
Yeah, um, Mr. Sacreiter is on the, the county planning commission, which really is an advisory commission to review plans for zoning. So I don't think that there would be a conflict of interest with, um, just the fact that he owns property that could be purchased. The, the, the development projects would mean that the property that he owns and they own would be purchased by a private developer. And so the county's involvement, um, is really just to support the economic development part of that. So I'll also, you know, defer to our, our legal counsel, but I don't see any conflict of interest there.
Jim?
Thank you.
I, I, I would concur with Kelly. The, um, Mr. Sacreiter is not voting on this. He's, um, his, his involvement on the county planning commission is at most incidental to the ultimate use of his property, which, you know, and, and these, these grants, these are really more oriented as grants to, um, facilitate the development of that property to benefit the county as a whole.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
We have six yes.
Motion carries.
I also want to thank and acknowledge Jen Bomler, Community Development Director. It's been a lot of work for her to try to shepherd through these grants and, and Brad Wilcox for helping on the purchasing end to make sure that we're following the required process to, to select the contractors. So it's a lot of work usually when the county assists with economic development efforts, usually at not much of a cost recovery for us. But again, they are, um, intended to, to benefit the county overall. We have a couple of sites that are, are actually on a very short list that the state is able to market for development like this. And the, the development projects that we've, um, been considering have, you know, thousands of jobs, um, being planned. So we're hopeful. So thank you for that. 12B4 is the last item under new business tonight. And, uh, again, this, this one relates to a project that's been in the works for at least a year now. And, and that is to, um, finalize a contract with the PEA group to uh, help us with Kimball Pines development. So, um, the Kimball Pines, we received a grant. We had a public hearing and received the grant last summer. We revised the grant. Um, this is an MDNR trust fund grant back in October of, of 2020. So the board's actually seen this item on the agenda three times. Actually, four times in March of this year, you approve the engagement of PEA to be uh, kind of like a, a pre-approved contractor to do planning, various planning and architectural design and engineering for all of our park projects. So this is the actual, this is the first actual contract uh, for a project and the amount is about 52,000, which is why we're bringing that to you. It's above our administrative contract approval threshold. But P E I is going to assist with MAP and surveying and construction administration. Uh, this is grant-funded. It does have a required match that fortunately we'll be able to, um, gather from several sources, one of which is our new Parks Village. But the renovations being planned at Kimball Pines, just a reminder, new entrance, restroom, accessible restrooms, improved parking, improved pathway and some landscaping. So this is again, the final step to get started on the Kimball Pines, $400,000 or so overall enhancement plan.
They have a motion to approve the Kimball Pines Park contract with P E A Group as presented.
So moved Vetti?
Support.
Betty and King. Is there any discussion?
Chair, I was wondering, I'm excusing, excuse me. Thank you guys. Um, just Kelly, with the projects that were going to be put in place there at Kimball Park and things like that, what, um, and, and I heard you say like, you know, some, uh, parks and trees and things like that. And I'm always interested, as everyone knows, and natural resources and tree removals and things like that. What type, or have you seen the actual plan? Or what type of movement through that park? You know, is this particular grant looking for? Or will the architectures be actually working on that and then sending that back to us?
That, the second thing you said is correct. That is the purpose of this contract to actually create the, the designs for this project to go forward. So that's, they'll be helping with their expertise will help us, you know, create the best layout for that park.
Okay, great.
It would also address accessibility, parking, and those kind of issues. So, um, good things could happen to Kimball Park. It's been in that disrepair since, um, when it was only 2011.
Yes.
Yeah. So glad to be back on track with it. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
It's seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is citizens' time. The same rules apply as during the first citizens' time. Please limit your time to three minutes and no negative personal comments. Please meet your TV or computer when calling in as the background sound will generate feedback. And note that there's a 30-second delay between the live meeting and the YouTube feed. Is there anyone that would like to address our commissioners? We have someone with their hand up. Dominic.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Thank you, Kate Frisbee and, uh, um, all Board of Commissioners and all elected officials for having me, uh, for this meeting. Uh, my name is Dominic Wu. My last name being pronounced as Wu, and I'm a resident of Better Creek. My address, 135 Oakland Place, Better Creek, zip code 49015. Uh, it is a great honor to serve on a staff committee for remaining in terms of trees or shell for next two years. Uh, again, uh, thank you all for having me and giving me a short introduction time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dominic, and thank you for stepping up and fill that role. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Patrick, anybody in the queue?
Oh, no, sir.
All right, we'll wait just a little bit here. All right, commissioners' time. Anybody have any comments for commissioners' time?
Mr. Chair, if I may, please.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Well, first and foremost, Helen kind of stole my thunder on this one, but, uh, I just want to take the opportunity to really commend the senior services staff, Helen and Kate and, and now Rebecca certainly being on, on board now, uh, for really finding a program to basically replace the Cincinnarian luncheon that we've, uh, had come to, to really used to be able to, to provide and really enjoyed that process. But I will say that, uh, great job to really thinking out of the box in terms of trying to find something. But as part of that, I had the Great job to really thinking out of the box in terms of trying to find something, but as part of that, I had the absolute honor the yesterday morning to interview. Miss Stella Ingram, which is a Homer resident at a hundred and one and a half years young. Her smile is still light up any room, we had a great time talking to her for about a half hour. You just simply, I just cannot wait to see the finished project, the product for this project is certainly everyone will get a glimpse. Into the incredible lives of the Cincinnarians in which we have in Calhoun County and the lives they've, they've lived, so. Again, just kudos to, to everybody that's been involved in this process, but, and I would be remiss if I also didn't include. A fellow Cincinnarian, Mr. Robert Holt, who celebrated his hundred and third birthday on April thirtieth in Albion. Stopped by for his birthday party and he told me he got up and put his shoes and tied his shoes on, and I told him I need to know what his secret was. But what he expected is for all of us to come back in ten years to celebrate his one hundred and thirteenth birthday, so that's what he told us. He's an incredible gentleman, but again, all of our Cincinnarians are, and again, I just want to say kudos to the. Calhoun County Senior Services for putting together this project, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else?
Yeah, something, Steve?
Go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
So, uh, Exford Township, it kind of just troubles me a little bit, they were trying to get a twenty-three and a half mile road still coated. And I can't find anywhere in our policies where administration from the road department has the authority. To say they're not gonna put money into a road. For this reason or that reason, I know for a fact we're gonna, on primary roads, what they want done. And all of a sudden, we're telling them that they gotta pave this road first, I think we're better than that, we're leaders, they're elected. By our people to represent them, and I don't know one of my townships that are happy, we're trying to work with this road department. Exford Township is a very small township, they have no village, but they come up with over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to put in their local roads. And they don't feel like they're getting the, a fair deal, and I just want to express my opinion on that, thank you.
All right, I have a comment tonight, and I'm gonna address it to Commissioner Smith, and I'm not speaking as the chair. But recently, you've been posting some stuff on social media about a major league problem and gross misuse of trust. And we turn dollars over with no strings attached. Special millages are very narrowly limited to what the ballot language states and, and not anything they want. As you stated, in spending, the ballot language says maintaining, operating. Persevering or preserving, acquiring and developing parks, not anything they want. Most of us trust the local officials to do good things, and they have to do it legally within the structure. Nothing illegal or controversial of it that has been done by commissioners, county administration or county staff has a hint of impropriety. Yet you continue your public statements, your misstatements bring about a controversy that isn't. And puts your fellow commissioners at odds with you and unjustly degrades the public trust and county government. I'm asking you to stop and refrain from that in the future, you certainly have the right to a First Amendment. To speak your mind, but when you cast it down on everybody else, that's not fair, thank you.
Since we're gonna talk about that, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
On November seventh, two thousand and nineteen, during discussion of the proposed ballot language, simply the language set before the board. Many of us had reservations about the lack of oversight, the lack of specific language in regard to the millage that we were proposing. To put before the voters. And I understand, you know, I understand where that was coming from for a lot of folks. However, at that same meeting, I think a lot of those concerns were eased by the following quote from our Corporation Council. And this is in the, in the meeting video, so I mean, I'm gonna say here's a quote, but I would encourage folks to go back and take a look at that video. If this does pass, this is a direct quote. What we would also be coming back with you with is a plan to essentially set the structure that you're talking about. In reference to my question about a lack of oversight or policy around this millage language. That you, the Board of Commissioners, would approve and say how that would work, and none of that money would be dispersed until you have set up that structure, end quote. Now it came to my attention, the week of April fifteenth, that that money indeed had been dispersed. And to my knowledge, and I've attended every meeting since, we have not approved any plans for these funds. Now, some may say that the work of the Parks Commission, which I applaud and respect. And their approval of plans somehow counts, but I would remind my colleagues that the Parks Commission is an advisory board. With all final decisions being made by the elected officials, and that simply did not happen here. Now, as you know, I've asked our Corporation Council to look into it, and I look forward to his reply, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair? May I ask a question, please?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. For the parks and wrecks and, and, and the funds that are, have funds been released? I mean, it could, wouldn't this just simply be okay if we have opportunity to go, but have, I, I guess I'm just trying to make sure that I. I understand both, both you and, and. And Commissioner Smith, have the funds been already been released before now, or?
The funds that were fifty percent of the funds generated, as stated in all of our public comments. Were dispersed to the other entities of, of government, cities and townships. They were part of the two thousand and twenty-one budget that was developed.
Yes.
Twenty twenty, the Commissioner Smith was part of the Budget Committee, and they were dispersed soon after we collected them. So it was part of the budget process that they were already there and approved in an expenditure going out, shown as an expenditure going out. The other government, so. Did we specifically approve it as a commission in that one step? No, but we approved the budget that had it within it. As a total step, so. As I said, when you spend millage dollars, special millage dollars have very narrowly defined. Ability to be spent, and I think I said, I listed those four or five things, and that is maintenance. Preserving, acquiring, and developing parks and, and operating parks. So they can only spend it on those dollars, or those dollars on those types of issues. And they can't spend it on anything they just want to spend it on, so. It's, it's a, it's kind of a hair splitting thing, did we approve that specific issue on a singular vote? No, but we approved the budget that had it in it.
Okay.
Does that help answer your question?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I, I was listening to what you were saying, anything to say, yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So like such as, like originally the plan that we had. The original plan they used for. Just to show everybody what we're gonna plan with to do, would say that fifty percent would stay with the county funds for parks. And here fifty percent would be distributed amongst the township cities. Now Burlington, or not Burlington, I'm sorry, Exford Township told me that they paid out over eleven thousand dollars in their township for this Parks Village. That would be fifty-five hundred dollars that they would receive back if it's fifty percent. They receive right, right around three thousand dollars, that's a far cry from fifty percent.
It's the totality of the collection, not by individual jurisdiction.
Jurisdictions.
Mr. Chair, may I address that?
What's that?
May I address that, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I don't want to belabor this any longer, but you know, as far as the budget goes, I completely agree, we allocated that money, absolutely. The issue is, however, we also allocated money for asphalt, we don't, we didn't decide as part of the budget process where to put it though. This is the same deal, these are the same string, you know, it's. We were told one thing and another thing happened, and I think I have a responsibility as an elected official to follow up on why that didn't happen. Furthermore, if you recall the millage language, strictly speaking the millage language that we approved, there's no mention of a split. So a lot of these policy questions need to be addressed, and I'm certain. I know from my conversations with many of my colleagues here on the board, we were all here for that. There were some reservations about this broad language that were, was eased greatly by the words of our council. That this would be something that would come to our attention again, and we would have an opportunity to provide a policy input around prior to the funds being dispersed. And I was very disappointed to find out that the money's out the door and. There's nothing we can do about it, so I, I, I want to know what happened. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm not aware of a county millage for asphalt, which if there was one, I guess there would be a plan of where to put it. But I also. Don't know why this couldn't have been brought up during the budget discussion, I mean. Lemonade stands were, this is certainly more important than most people, most things like lemonade stands. Why wouldn't this been brought up at the budget time? I, I don't, I don't understand, it's, it's almost like it's, it was approved and now. I don't like that it was approved, and I, I, I want to go backwards. We govern, we rely on committees within this commission to bring forth recommendations. And we approve it or we don't, if there's a problem with something that, that is going on within those committees, be it the Budget Committee. You bring it to your seven colleagues' attention and you vote yes or no. Am I wrong?
Yes. We do not approve policy as budget decisions. Allocating the funds at per the budget was the right thing to do, absolutely. But we don't discuss policy matters as a part of the budget, as a part of the budget, that policy framework needs to be erected during a policy discussion. Setting the funds aside is one thing, attaching the strings to them is another, and you are absolutely correct, we govern. Unfortunately, that responsibility and that authority was taken from us and our ability to govern what it means. To, to distribute this money, what's a park? What's a park system, what are things we can and can't do, the local units can and can't do with these funds, you know, that, those decisions were made. Not by us.
What did you honestly done?
I wanted the plan that was promised to us as part of our, of our November seventh, two thousand and nineteen meet, meeting to come before us, full stop. And that didn't happen.
What would you have done different?
What would I have done different?
Yeah.
I don't know, hypothetically, any variety of things. But somebody else did it, somebody else who wasn't elected to these, this position that we're all in, other people did our job. When we were furthermore, it was very specifically told that this would come before us.
But I guess I, I'm not following this because this was money that was allocated within the budget.
Yeah, as it should have been. But the strings were not attached by us.
I think it was allocated during, I'm sorry, excuse me, I don't want, I know Jake that you, Commissioner. Want to go through it, I know, and, and so, but I just wanted to say, I think that, if, yes, we did vote. To approve the budget where the funds were allocated on, but I think that it was advised. Or we were advised that before any of the budget expenditures are released or so. We would know what certain plans were that they were going to be, if I'm, if I'm understanding you correct. Commissioner Smith, and that would be, that would be a problem because we were advised that. These plans would come back and we'd be able to review them and see exactly where. That particular money in the budget was going towards parks and wrecks. You know, what plans I think were more, am I, am I, am I saying that correct?
I agree with you.
Yes, you have perfectly encapsulated it, and I can't emphasize enough, I'm not an attorney. But I don't think anything illegal went on, nor have I said so, but I do think it's misuse of the trust right now, intentional or not, that we need to get to the bottom of.
Any other comment? Move on, County, Calhoun County Claims Payable, they have a motion to approve the Calhoun County Claims Payable for April second. Two thousand and twenty-one through April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, the amount of six million, seven thousand dollars, three. Seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-four cents as presented.
So moved, Betty.
Support Smith.
Betty and Smith, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frisbee?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tompkins?
Yes.
Mr. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Hatcher?
Yes, please.
It's seven yes.
Motion carries. Any announcements? All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.